...law, but even on their application, they don't even tell the truth as who they are. Based upon the fact that they're lying, just upon their application, which it says water pipe, smoke shop, tobacco, retail, nothing about medical marijuana, that alone, you should deny the application. And a majority of the ones that we're seeing in our area, they do not tell the truth about who they are and the fact that they are selling medical marijuana, and they have done things through the loophole, and you need to deny them, you need to send them back, they need to get in line, and they need to re-imply and do it properly. And the legitimate ones are good, they need to stay.
Thank you very much, council member?
Thank you very much, and I'd just like to state again that whether you are operating legitimately or not, whether you are properly giving medical marijuana to those with a legitimate prescription or not, is not the issue here. This council, in general, has been very supportive of providing a framework by which we could implement the intent of Proposition 215. This council, in general, has been supportive of providing those with legitimate medical issues, medical marijuana. The issue today is whether or not the applicants have demonstrated that, given the interim control ordinance, they should be allowed to operate because they faced a hardship. That is the issue, and that is what we are deciding today. And again, Mr. Councilmember, Mr. Chair, this application, as the previous one, fear of prosecution for the federal government, a clash between federal and state law, does not, in my opinion, demonstrate a hardship exemption. I would, again, move that we deny this application.
Okay, so based on the application submitted, given the council members' recommendation, the applicant cites management skills, compassionism, knowledge, and fear of federal prosecution amongst the reasons, which do not demonstrate any hardship. From the provisions, the ICO ordinance, including but not limited to reasons, the applicant was unable to register with the city clerk pursuant to Section 3 of the ordinance, therefore, the hardship exemption application should be denied. That'll be the action of this committee. Next item, Roberto?
It's item three, councilman. This is an application filed by Aman Fatay. It's hardship exemption from the Medical Marijuana ICO for Organic Healing Center located at 1733 Colorado Boulevard in CD 14.
That applicant, please come on up, or the representative? Is the applicant here? Okay, seen no speaker cards. Councilmember, have you had the opportunity to review this application?
Yes, I have, sir, and again, based on some of the previous recommendations, previous statements, that they were, it seems like their application states fear of federal prosecution and a clash between federal-state law, that is not sufficient facts for which you grant hardship. I move that we deny the hardship.
That'll be the action of this committee, we'll deny the hardship application. Item number four?
Item four, councilmen, application filed by Stuart Richland, the attorney representing Fantastic Healing Plants Collective, a nonprofit corporation, and God's Good Medicine, a nonprofit corporation located at 227 Colorado Boulevard Number 1341 in CD 14.
Graham Berry especially appearing for Stuart Richland on behalf of the applicant, who has also filed a 25-page brief this morning setting forth the reasons for the hardship and due process objections. The hardship applied for also includes community hardship. There is nothing sacrosanct about the original 187 that have been recognized by the city. Instead, the city has singled out medical marijuana for special treatment under an unduly expensive, burdensome, and discriminatory regulation. The city does not regulate any other form of medicine for medical need. It has concentrated solely on medical marijuana, ignoring other dangerous substances such as clinical cocaine and the like. The city has never regulated the number of hospitals, doctors, dispensaries, clinics, or the like in connection with the provision of medical services, and it would be discriminatory to do so in connection with medical marijuana alone. The post-filing impact of this application will be significant. The pre-filing hardship includes the clash of federal law with state law, and the applicants have reasonably relied upon the procedures and assurances given by the city council. They face due process violations and lack of notice and lack of opportunity to present a fully, a full presentation along with witnesses and evidence.
Okay. Anybody here on behalf of the organization?
I don't believe so.
No? Okay. All right. My attorney, in terms of the 72 hours, is that, that's the notification period established by the state, correct?
Under the Brown Act, that's correct.
Okay.
And this is a legislative action, so that's sufficient.
Okay, so we are following the law in that regard?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would submit...
Sir, this is not a debate, again. Okay, councilmember?
Again, as the previous applications, fear of prosecution, conflict between state and federal law is not sufficient to constitute hardship. I move that we deny this hardship. And again, this is a legislative hearing, we have our own due process procedures, we have our own regulations as to how we conduct these hearings, it is not a court of law.
Okay, thank you very much. That'll be the action of this committee, application denied. Thank you. Our next item, Roberto?
It's item five, councilman. It's an application, again, filed by Stuart Richland, the attorney. He's representing Universal Caregiver Center, a nonprofit corporation in CD 14 located at 4157 Eagle Rock Boulevard.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
The applicant has two minutes.
How you doing? My name is Aaravakin. I'm representing Universal Caregivers on 4157 Eagle Rock Boulevard. We've been open over, for over three months, we have over 500 patients. We never had any complaints from the neighborhood shopping center. Our landlord actually is a very close friend of ours. Another thing is, I know the Eagle Rock is getting a lot of heat over the last maybe three, four months, a lot of dispensers opening up. I know the neighborhood city council is against us for some reason. First of all, we're not even, we're not even in Eagle Rock, we're in Glassell Park. We have our own city council. They have never sent us any letters, any complaints. Our zip code is totally different than Eagle Rock. For some reason, Eagle Rock is, keeps representing us, Brian, they're trying to close a lot of dispensers in Eagle Rock. That's my question, is why, if we have our own city council, why is Eagle Rock is coming to us and our own city is not even, you know, going against us?
Okay, so, that your statement regarding the hardship exemption?
Yes.
Okay. Sir?
Hardship is not defined under the ICO. It is also difficult to find a definition of hardship at law, so we're forced to rely upon the dictionary definition of undue expense or fear of a certain outcome. And the clash between federal and state law, at the time these applications were submitted, created a hardship. Similarly, the expense they have now incurred and will lose and suffer if their application's denied also constitutes a hardship. They reasonably relied upon the procedures set forth by this city council and explained by its representatives, and they proceeded in accordance with those procedures as assured by those representatives. The hardship also includes a community hardship that's going to suffer from the restriction on the number of licenses issued here, contrary to any other medical...
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Sir, do you have one minute? Like to speak?
He's good.
Okay, you're fine. Okay, I don't see anyone else on speaker cards on this item. Councilmember?
Yes, thank you, it seems like this application has the same language as before, and I'd move that we, from the other applications we've seen so far, I move that we deny this hardship exemption.
Okay, that'll be the action of this committee. Thank you. Roberto, next item?
Yes, councilmembers, item six, it's an application filed by Steve Lyles. This is in regards to Green Guild located at 1640 Cahuenga Boulevard in CD 13.
Okay, can we hear from the applicant on this item? Reason for your... Is applicant here? Application number six, filed by Steve Lyles. Steve Lyles here? Okay, we'll move to the council office. We have Noel Nguyen?
Good morning, councilmember. Noel Hyun, Planning Deputy for Councilmember Garcetti. I've submitted to the file a letter and a report that the council office has prepared for this application. The applicant states in the application that the reason the hardship exists and exemption should be granted is because the applicant just became aware of need to register MCD. MCD is in full compliance with current Los Angeles city requirements of permits and is asking for council approval. Attached to the form that the office of, the city clerk's office generated, he included an office lease executed on August 1st, 2008, and a copy of the California State Board of Equalization seller's permit dated August 1st, 2008. He did not submit any other materials to the file. I think based on the application, we are recommending denial of the application.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seen no one else on the queue? Based on the application submitted, District 13's recommendation, the applicant cites lack of awareness to register amongst the reasons, which do not, which does not demonstrate any hardship from the provisions of the ordinance 179027, including, but not limited to reasons, the applicant was unable to register with the city clerk pursuant to the Section 3 of the ordinance, therefore, we'll move to deny the hardship exemption. That'll be the action of this committee? Is that a second?
Second.
Thank you, that'll be the action of this committee. Okay, Roberto, next item?
It's item seven, councilmembers. This application was filed by Matthew Dunn. It's for the Medical Marijuana ICO hardship. It's for Advanced Patients Collective located at 6410 Hollywood Boulevard in CD 13.
Okay, applicant, please? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, councilmembers.
Please, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, thank you for your time. I'm Matthew Dunn, I represent Advanced Patients Collective. We opened in December '05. At that time, there were only eight other collectives in the city. Since that time, we've been taking care of thousands of patients. I have 20 employees, very secure, followed all the guidelines. The reason why I believe a hardship exists, because two years after I was, well, in '08, we received the federal, my landlord received the letter from the DEA threatening the loss of his property. Even though California courts have decided that no landlord could be at risk for leasing to our type of business, they still sent that letter, and he was scared, so he did not renew my lease. So I moved two blocks from where I was, I still take care of the same thousands of patients, I work closely with the Wilcox Police Division Lead Detective Danny Askara to make sure that we're doing things right, and the bid patrol in Hollywood where we're at, there's no schools or anything in our area. So I believe our hardship is based solely on the fact that we had to move a couple blocks due to the federal letter.
Okay, sir, is that it?
Can I clarify something? So if you're one of the original operators, you would qualify pre-ICO, and you wouldn't have to apply for a hardship?
I was told I had to, to move two blocks.
Oh, you moved?
I had to move two blocks.
And why did you have to move?
Because we received the DEA letter, my landlord received the DEA letter threatening him.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. District 13, Representative Noel Nguyen, come on up, please.
Good morning, councilmembers. Noel Hyun, Planning Deputy for Council District 13. I think Councilmember Weisar said this earlier at a different hearing, but Councilmember Garcetti supports safe, fair access to medical marijuana for patients who need it. I've been involved in the working group drafting the permanent ordinance, and although this applicant states that they have a DEA letter, and we want to be able to support the businesses that, the establishments that registered before the ICO, there were no, there were no doc, there was no documentation submitted to the file that actually proves the facts that he stated were actually true. So in this case, the council office is recommending denial of the application because we didn't feel that the applicant, the application submitted actually demonstrated the facts that they were presenting. So we're recommending denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. So given the...
Excuse me?
Application?
Are you receiving the letter of the president?
No, that's not, sir. So given the information in the application, and given the council office's recommendation, we move to deny the request for hardship exemption.
Second.
Second. That'll be the action of this committee. Next one, Roberto?
Next one, councilmembers, is an application filed by Frank Conti from the Medical Marijuana ICO, and this is for City of Angels Wellness Center located at 6435 West Sunset Boulevard in CD 13.
Have applicant come over, please? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Frank Conti, I'm co-owner of City of Angels Wellness Center. I'm here today to state why hardship exists and ask that an exemption be granted. We opened in September of 2006 prior to the ICO, but were forced to move when our landlord received a threatening letter from the DEA. As the fear generated by those letters spread, it was virtually impossible to find property owner willing to risk forfeiture or prosecution by the federal government. As a result, we were unable to relocate in time to register by the November 13th deadline, which would have required a copy of our lease. From the very beginning, we have paid taxes, followed guidelines, and verified all required patient documentation before dispensing medication. It has always been our policy to be model tenants and respectful, considerate neighbors by maintaining a quiet, inobtrusive presence. We serve only a small number of patients, which keeps activity to a minimum, and advertising is limited to medical marijuana-specific publications without the use of flyers or signage. Entrance to our facility is controlled electronically and monitored by cameras. We are more than 1,000 feet from any sensitive areas such as schools, churches, or libraries. City of Angels is an asset to the community. By creating much-needed revenue for local businesses, the rental space we occupy had been vacant for six months and had fallen into a state of disrepair. It has now been restored and provides income for our landlord and his wife, both of whom are retired. By granting this hardship, it will allow us to remain contributing members of society. These are the qualifying reasons for hardship exemption as indicated by the city ordinance pertaining to our business.
That concludes your statement, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. We have, what is Brent Becker and Jill Jonides, I believe? Just come on up. Thank you, Mr. Conti.
Thank you. Excuse me, sir. I would also like to ask if I could move for a continuance due to the fact that we had no notification of this hearing. I just found out about this last night. We had no letter, nothing.
We publicized and provided the 72-hour notice, and that's the procedure we follow.
How, how so? Melded?
Okay, thank you, sir. Like to speak? You have one minute.
Okay. My name is Brent Becker, and I help City of Angels with doing some, you know, I guess for lack of a better term, a consultant, and I'm just helping them with their, you know, paperwork and, you know, things like sales tax, et cetera. I'm an accountant by training, so I've been attempting to help them comply with all the, you know, the rules and regulations. They did have to move because of the, because landlord didn't want to rent to them after they got a letter from the DEA, and that certainly seems to be an economic hardship to me. And again, without, you know, a clear definition of what hardship is, hardship seems to me to mean loss of revenue, loss of income. There's, there are, there's an attorney who helped prepare this hardship clause, isn't even here today to represent these guys. So there's, it's, so hardship means to me, loss of income, loss of revenue, loss of ability to do business, and that seems to be pretty unfair, and there's not a lot of notification here. And we just like, you know, again, a fair shake and like the time to actually prepare all the proper documentation and hire an attorney and come back and, and be able to see if we can't get an exception.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jill Jonides? Good morning.
Good morning, how are you? I'd just like to reiterate...
Give us your name for the...
My name is Jill Jonides. I'm representing City of Angels. I just wanted to reiterate by saying that we, that we're here to demonstrate that there was a hardship due to the fact that their original location, where they were, and having, having received the DEA landlord letters, it just made every property owner in Los Angeles, or in the area that they were in Hollywood at least, absolutely completely fearful and not willing to rent to this type of business. Therefore, the only reason that they were not able to register in time for that, the ICO deadline, was because they didn't have a location. And that is, that is, I feel, the hardship, that's why I'm here to say that that's the hardship that I feel that they're demonstrating. Once they had location, you know, it just that they wouldn't have been able to provide a copy of their lease, which was one of the required documents in order to register for the ICO. And thank you very much for hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Noel Hyun, please. Nguyen? Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Hyun, Planning Deputy for Council District 13. In reviewing this application, there, there was one statement the applicant made for the reason for granting the hardship would be, the applicant just became aware of need to register with the city and is in full compliance with all required permits, insurance, buffer zones, et cetera. Applicant asked for council's approval. Attached to the application were several attachments, but there was not included any narrative or description of how the attachments fit together. Some of the attachments referenced different locations, different people, and so my understanding is a burden's on the applicant to actually demonstrate that the hardship is there. In our analysis of the report, we weren't able to come to any positive conclusion about that, so we're recommending denial.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Seen no one else on the public card queue here? Given the reasons by the council office and review of this committee, we'll move to deny the hardship exemption. That'll be the action of this committee. Councilmember?
Second.
That'll be the action of this committee. Okay. Next item, Roberto?
It's item nine, councilmembers. It's an application by Akhtar Motamery. The representative is David Taban, and he's requesting a hardship exemption from the Medical Marijuana ICO for Organic Living Center located at 11607 Vicente Boulevard in CD 11.
Okay, do we have the applicant here today? Akhtar? How about David Taban, representative? Okay, how about Donald Keller? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners.
Please give us your name.
My name is Donald Keller. I'm a member of the Brentwood Community Council Veterans Affairs Committee and Land Use Committee, and we, on behalf of that organization with over 50,000 stakeholders, we request that you deny this application. This, this location does not yet operate. It's a vacant store right now. This location is within 500 feet of the entrance to the West Los Angeles Veterans Campus where hospital facilities and domiciliary facilities are being operated to rehabilitate veterans from substance abuse and alcohol abuse. We submit that if, if there's any need for a MMD operation in this area, the Veterans Administration will care for its veterans appropriately. And we understand that, we understand that the council...
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Wants a thousand-foot limitation with...
Thank you, sir.
Regarding the schools...
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
We want the hospitals included and...
Thank you very much.
...to patients.
Thank you. Okay.
Good morning, Whitney Blumenfeld for Councilman Bill Rosendahl's office. As you heard from one of our constituents, we would like to deny this application as there is been no hardship, and it would create a problem given that there is no hardship, and it is directly across from the VA campus and within 1,000 feet from a place of worship. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blumenfeld. Councilmember, any comments? Okay, so given the actions of the council officer observation and public testimony and information provided in the application, we move to deny the hardship exemption application. That'll be the action, councilmember?
Second.
Okay, that'll be the action of this committee. Okay, next item, Roberto?
It's item 10, councilmembers. This is an application filed by Daniel Lutz and Brian Behrens, they're the representatives. It's an exemption for the Medical Marijuana ICO for Green Oasis located at 11924 Jefferson Boulevard in CD 11.
Okay.
Jeffrey Morris appearing for...
Please take a seat.
What I'd like to do is request a second call on this...
Sir, can you please take a seat, because there's a microphone there that the, this is being aired, and people need to hear what you're saying. First, first, I'd like to request that we go on second call as I asked to file documents with the clerk of the committee, and she indicated that she needed additional copies, so my assistant is now out making those additional copies. Also, I think that the council needs to consider those documents, so I would request, after being heard, that the matter be taken under submission so that those documents can be reviewed by the committee. And to, there are a list of objections that my clients have included in the packet that we have for filing this morning.
So you have nothing in front of you or with you? You came to this committee?
No, I came with the documents you're on...
Can you just give us your reasons, given what you do have?
Well, I would prefer to have the documents that...
Sir, your agenda item is up now. If you have information, give us a reason for hardship exemption, we'd like to hear it now.
Okay. On behalf of my client, one of the, there are a list of reasons stated under the application for exemption, which the documents speak for themselves. In addition, at the time of seeking the exemption, my client's father was severely ill with cancer. He was the primary caregiver. This created an inability for him to timely comply with the requirements of registering, and therefore, he sought an exemption for those reasons, as well as reasons stated by many of the other applicants, that there was a fear of prosecution by the federal government for engaging in the supply of medical marijuana. For those reasons, and as well as reasons that my client will state when it's his turn to speak, and the information that is provided to this council in the packet which I will file as soon as it's returned, those are the body of the basis for the exemption.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Daniel Lutz, I'm representing Westside Green Oasis and Green Oasis. We are providing a valuable service for the community that's around us. We actually had moved from a location on Lincoln Boulevard in Washington where there seemed to be a proliferation of other medical marijuana collectives opening. We are, and we, we tried to make full compliance with what the proposed ordinance are, where, so we wanted to make sure we were 1,000 feet away from any other dispensary, or any school, or anything other that would, you know, deny our exemption. And we do wish that you would consider that we do have a need to help provide medical care for the people in our lives, and, and in, in the community where we're at, we have a lot of support. The people are, we have at least 70% of the people who, within the last six weeks that we've been in operation have come back. They find it clean and safe. We put a lot of effort and resources into developing our place. It's very beautiful and comfortable, and people feel safe there. It's very beautiful and comfortable, and people feel safe there. And I would request that you grant us a continuance to get more information if we, so we can get that together. But we still feel that we are providing a valuable service for the people in our neighborhood and in our lives.
And if I may, I'd like to add one additional thing. It would present an economic hardship in light of the high cost of the security which is in place. It's a fully gated, fully video-monitored facility, and there would be a severe economic hardship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we heard from Mr. Morris, Mr. Lutz, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have with us council office representative, Whitney Blumenfeld. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners, council members, actually. We have received numerous letters from community members in opposition to this because of its close proximity to the residential area. It's also in very close proximity to a school and a preschool, and we are asking that this application be denied because no hardship has been demonstrated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Okay, so I would move that we deny the hardship exemption, given the information in the application, given the statement from the council office.
Second.
That'll be a second, so that'll be the action of this committee, to deny the hardship exemption application. Roberto, next item?
That would be item 11, councilman. It's an application by Daniel Halbert, and it's, again, a Medical Marijuana ICO exception for Best Butts located at 12515 Venice Boulevard in CD-11.
Okay. Good morning.
CD-11. CD-11.
Yes, council.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Halbert. My hardship really is that I was living in Phoenix, Arizona, and I was invited out by some people to check out the situation and see if it was a legitimate opportunity. I believe this person to be an attorney and an advocate for medical marijuana. I spent $3,500 on his advice. He took me down to the, all the council buildings. I wasn't aware of the political climate here. And so, legitimately, I believed I opened up under a legitimate hardship. Since then, first of all, my attorneys now have requested a continuance because we have, they have not, one of our attorneys sent a plane ticket to the council, I believe, saying that he is out of town right now, and we haven't had proper notification. I've spoken with Sharon Cummings, Director-at-Large of the Mar Vista Community Council. She agrees we are a very well-run dispensary, a benefit to the neighborhood. There's many of them she'd like to get rid of. She's invited me to the Plum Meeting and said that she would support us there. I need time to develop community support. Again, I was given bad advice until just about two weeks ago on how this was properly done. I've invested my entire life savings. I made three trips out here. We really want to be a benefit to the community. I've received, I went to all the business owners around us. They agree that we are a good addition to the neighborhood. We're bringing a lot of respectable clientele. I have over 112 signatures from people that live in the neighborhood. They also agree. Again, I've signed a two-year lease. For $5,900, I've never backed out on anything that I've ever done, so I will have to pay that lease. I will lose pretty much everything. I've got a two-year lease on the security equipment. Again, we have a safe, friendly environment for our people to come in, and we believe if given a continuance, we can prove our value to the community.
I'd like to call up the council office. Is that here? This is in the district, correct?
Correct. Correct. This one, we did agree to continue.
And for the reasons that he provided, you can, that's the recommendation for the council to continue this?
Correct. No, not his reasons. We just agreed to continue it.
Okay.
We agreed because of large and numerous requests from the community and wanting to have more outreach with our community groups and the Mar Vista Neighborhood Council.
Okay. We'll continue this. How much time do you need, Ms. Blumenfeld?
One week is sufficient. The next hearing you have on this, two weeks, whatever the next one is.
Okay. We'll do that. We'll continue this item on request of the council office.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, Roberto?
Council members, it's item 12. This application was filed by Nariman Narus. He's filing a hardship exemption for the Medical Marijuana ICO for Hills Caregivers located at 2000 West Ventura Boulevard, Suite B and C in CD-3.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. My name is Nariman Narus. I run and operate, would you like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay. So, the applicant will speak for two minutes. Can we start the clock over again?
Go ahead.
I apologize. Like I was saying, my name is Nariman Narus. I run and operate the Hills Caregivers with my colleague, Amir Broni. I apologize for being ill-prepared, but I just barely received the hearing notice on Friday, giving us less than one business day to prepare. There are several issues that I would like to bring up in front of the committee. Sadly, I have very limited time, so I will try to be brief. The first issue I would like to bring up is the fact that my colleague and I have been financially vested in this venture prior to the interim control ordinance taking effect. Although it is not listed in the hardship application, I can provide documentation to support that fact. Since we opened our doors last year, we have not had one single complaint from our neighbors, the surrounding community, or the local law enforcement agencies. If we would have a proper notification, we would have testimonials from our neighbors, as well as surrounding businesses and members stating that we run a legitimate establishment and are a positive force in the community. We are also a smaller outfit, and since we opened last year, we have built a very close relationship with a lot of our members, most of which are extremely ill. If we are forced to close, they will be displaced and forced to look for a safer alternative to acquiring the medication. We have worked diligently to ensure that we meet all ICO guidelines to the T. We pay taxes on our honest, hard-working citizens. Contrary to what most believe, this is no longer an industry that will make you extremely wealthy overnight. We earn a very modest living running the Hills Caregivers. We have invested our whole life savings into this venture, most of which has not yet been recovered. If we are forced to close, we will be left in debt, unemployed, demoralized, and bankrupt. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Begin now, or? Thank you. My name is H. Russell Halpern. I'm the attorney for a Hill caregiver. To begin with, I would object to these proceedings, or to the moratorium on constitutional grounds. I don't know if this tribunal has had the opportunity to read the case of O'Connell versus the City of Stockton. It's at 41 Cal IV, 1061. This area is, period, is our belief that this area is preempted by the state law, that the moratorium goes against state, that the state law imposing or pursuant to Prop. 215, that in effect, you're stating that they cannot, people cannot operate legal marijuana dispensaries. Secondly, we object to this hearing, the 72-hour notice, I believe is working days. These people were given notice Friday evening. It does not give the attorneys time to prepare Saturday and Sunday when we're on our days off.
Thank you very much, sir. Madam Attorney, would you like to respond to some of his assertions?
Terry Kaufman, MCA City Attorney's Office. There's nothing in the state law that prohibits the city from enacting zoning regulations on medical marijuana facilities, number one. And number two, the 72-hour Brown Act notice requirement is not 72, it's not bit three business days. It's just 72 hours.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Attorney.
I thought I had-
Okay, that concludes the comment.
I didn't have-
That concludes the comments, sir. We have another speaker card on this item. Thank you very much. We have Jonathan Brand from the council office.
Good morning, council members. Jonathan Brand with Councilman Dennis Zine's office. We have submitted a letter regarding this, as well as the other cases that we have today. And the reason that, you know, that applicant did not know to register with the city clerk is not a demonstration of a hardship, and we request annul of the application.
Thank you for that. Any comments, councilmember? Okay. Given the testimony of the council office, and given the review of the application, we want to deny the hardship exemption application on this item.
Second.
That'll be the action of this committee. Roberto?
The next item, council members. It's an application by Mark Dillon, and the representative is Scott H. Linden, the attorney representing the business located at 18375 West Ventura Boulevard, Suite 329 in CD-3.
Okay. Is the applicant here today? Is the applicant on this case here today? Seen no response. The only card on the queue is Mr. Brand. Come on up.
For the record, Jonathan Brand, Councilman Dennis Zine's office. The, I have a letter as well. Based on the application, the applicant has not demonstrated a hardship. I guess having to relocate or being evicted by the prior landlord after the ICO does not demonstrate a hardship. So, we recommend that the application be denied.
Okay. We do have a letter from Scott H. Linden. Is Scott H. Linden here? I'll make sure we give everybody the opportunity to speak. Okay, don't see Mr. Linden. For the record, they did submit a letter requesting. Okay, they're asking for the action to be withdrawn. So, we will move to deny the application, given the content of the application, and given the comment from the council office. That'll be the action. Do you have a second on that, councilmember?
I'm sorry, what's the action?
To withdraw?
Yes. The letter states they're withdrawing their application, yes.
And we also want to take an action to deny the application as well.
Yeah. Terry Kaufman, MCA City Attorney's Office. You should still take an action on the application, even though it's-
Okay. Second on your withdrawal.
Okay, so we will move to deny the hardship application. Okay, Roberto. Next one?
That would be item 14, council members. This application filed, again, by Mark Dillon, and it's requesting an exemption from the Medical Marijuana ICO for the business located at 19528 West Ventura Boulevard, Suite 261 in CD-3.
Mr. Brand?
Was this one withdrawn as well? It's the same applicant in the-
Same request, but again-
No, they're asking for a continuance, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay. Mr. Brand, on their application, given their location, can you give us some observations on this site, its impact in the area, and what's the position of the council office?
Yes. They, based on the application along Ventura Boulevard, and pretty much on both sides of Ventura Boulevard, in this area, there's residential very close. But based on their reasoning to apply for the hardship exemption, that their prior landlord required them to relocate to another area after the ICO, that does not demonstrate a hardship in this area.
Okay. So, given your observations and your review, I'd like to move to deny the hardship application.
Second.
That'll be the action of this committee. Roberto, next item?
It's item 15, council members. This application's filed by Ralph Bedrosian. It's a Medical Marijuana ICO request for Green Healing Group located at 19513 West Ventura Boulevard in CD-3.
The applicant, is he present? We have a Russell-
Halpern.
Halpern, and that's, you'll be representing the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Applicant would like to come on up? It's up to you, sir. Okay, let the record show, the applicant chose not to come to the table or to the microphone.
Thank you. Once again, two minutes. He cited the case of O'Connell versus the City of Stockton. City ordinance is regarding zoning cannot be used as a pretext to ban the sale of a legal substance, and that is exactly what's occurring. We're also objecting to the 72-hours. We're objecting to the manner in which these proceedings are going forward. It appears that they're, each application is being summarily denied without any discussion between the council members, and it's apparent that there's been a pre-decision to deny each and every one of these applications, which reduces this hearing to a farce and a sham. We would also ask that this matter be continued, that the notice or the definition of hardship has not been defined by this committee, and therefore, it is a violation of procedural due process, given the fact that the applicants are not given any notice as to what they are to bring before the committee to show that there has been a hardship. And we'd ask that the committee consider, continue each and every one of these, so that they can come up with some guidelines where the applicants can present to this committee in a logical manner as to why there's a hardship. Right now, there is no definition given by this committee of a hardship. And then, just summarily, the committee, after each individual speaks, takes about a half a second, I might note for the record, to deny the application.
Well, for the record, let us show Mr. Halpern did not take the time to try to indicate to this committee why they should qualify for hardship exemption. For the record, let it be known that this committee member is working closely with each council office. Each deputy who comes up has done their research, they've done their evaluation, they've looked at the applications. So, what you see here today is a conclusion of a long process. So, the assertion this is a sham truly is false. Obviously, the person who's speaking does not know or understand or is familiar with the legislative process and how the council works, with its deputies, its communities, and therefore, let us show the record, the process we've taken. Madam Attorney, anything else we could add?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brand?
Jonathan Brand with Councilman Dennis Zine's office. This one is actually pretty much right across the street from the last application that we just had. So, the same reasons exist. They cited that they did not know that they need to register with the city clerk. That's not, that's not a demonstration of hardship, in addition to the proximity to the other locations, as well as residential. We would recommend that this hardship application be denied.
Thank you, Mr. Brand.
Thank you.
Councilmember, any comments? Well, given the evidence before us, given the observations by the council office and their review and their analysis of location, move to deny the application for hardship exemption. Have a second?
Second.
That'll be the action of this committee. Next, Roberto?
The next batch of cases are all in CD-10, council members. All of them contain a communication from Councilmember Wesson. The number 16 is an application filed by Paul Hune Yoon, and it's a Medical Marijuana Hardship Exemption Request for Wilshire Compassionate Collective located at 3008 Wilshire Boulevard Number 100 in CD-10.
Thank you, Roberto. Item 16, we have Paul Yoon. Come on up, sir.
Good morning, council.
Good morning, sir.
My name is Paul Yoon, and I am here to explain why my hardship is legitimate. It's because prior to 2007, I got a permit to operate a dispensary in the city hall. So, I actually came here prior to 2007, before the ICO was created. And pretty much, the landlord agreed for me to use his property prior to the ICO. And while I spent money and did construction, the landlord, last minute, just decided to deny my rental application, and he kind of just, just left me, you know, left me hanging. And then, I've been looking for another property to rent during, when he denied me, and pretty much, no one was renting to any medical marijuana dispensaries because of the DEA raids and all this prosecution that were happening. That's pretty much why my landlord denied, he changed his mind. mind prior to 2007 ICO, whatever. And now, I am at that same location, which is at 3,000 Wilshire Boulevard. I am there right now because the landlord decided, he changed his mind, because I guess his property wasn't doing so well, because if you go to the place where the dispensary is at, it is known in Koreatown to be the most dead, emptiest mall. It is pretty sad, and pretty much, all the, pretty much, our dispensary being there brings a lot of people, brings a lot of our members to come to this mall and, you know, help out these businesses. And pretty much, I deserve, I deserve a hardship because I spent a lot of money, spent a lot of time with construction, and then the last minute, next thing I know, I cannot operate at this location. But now, I am at the same location where the owner said I could operate at, and now I am at, I am at that location operating right now, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Yun.
Thank you.
Mr. Andrew Westall? I keep saying Westall, it's Westall, right?
He stood. Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy for Councilmember Herb Wesson. As was stated by the CLA's office, we have submitted letters on this application, as well as the other nine that are before you. Based on the reasons given in the hardship exemption application, you would notice that many of the documents that were provided were either granted or approved after the ICO went into effect. As Councilmember Huizar also stated earlier, the conflict between state and federal laws does not constitute a hardship, and based on the rationale given for this application, that they just became aware of need to register, does not also constitute hardship. Therefore, we ask the committee to deny the hardship application.
Thank you, Mr. Westall. Any comments, Councilmember? Well, given the observations by the council office and their evaluation of this case, and given the material that's provided in the application, we would move to deny the hardship exemption application. Second?
Second.
That's a second, and that will be the action of this committee. Our next item, Roberto?
Again, this item is in CD10. It accompanies a letter by Councilmember Wesson. It's an application by Ani Chao Chin Yau. She's a representative, and she has filed a hardship exemption from the Medical Marijuana ICO for Relax Herbal Place Inc., located at 5427 West Pico Boulevard, Unit 201 in CD10.
Okay, I believe we have a, the applicant come on up, and Russell Halpern also.
Thank you. I want to incorporate my remarks, if that's possible, my last applicant, number 15, item 15. But I would also ask this committee that if they would address or tell us what the criteria of the hardship is, my client would be glad to answer that. At the moment, we're not really sure what the court, what the, this tribunal is looking for as to hardship. It seems that...
So, you're given two minutes to make a statement?
I take it that the committee is not going to do that. And then, once again, then, our objections are due process, both substantive and procedural. The preemptory clause of the California Constitution, that the fact that the city ordinances are being used for the purposes of banning the sale of marijuana in violation of the supremacy clause of the California Constitution, and that the procedurally, the 72 hours reasonably has to be working days, even though it doesn't specifically state that, common sense says that you cannot give notice on a Friday evening and expect people to be ready on a Monday morning to answer. And lastly, once again, this committee is here to hear reasons for hardship, and appears not to be taking into consideration anything that is said. No discussions are heard after the statements are made, which is an indication that there's been a decision made prior to any statements made by any of these applicants, and that it's just inviting them up to vent, but no consideration is given to anything that is said. With us also is a lady who would like to address this tribunal as to the hardship it would be to her as a member of the cooperative.
Again, just for the record, please hold on, ma'am. Just for the record, in response to Mr. Halpern's assertions, these cases are reviewed beforehand. The information's been given to us beforehand. The applications are studied by the council office, by the council deputies. We hear public testimony. We hear testimony from individuals who speak to this council, council office beforehand. So, today is a culmination of a whole series of actions, conversations, analysis, and review. So, contrary to Mr. Halpern's assertion, this is not being done spontaneously at the spur of the moment, as he might be asserting.
That's not what I'm asserting.
So, that is what I heard.
That is not what I'm asserting.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, your point. No, you don't. Ma'am, that's it.
I'm a cancer patient, and medical marijuana is a benefit for me. The fact that this dispensary is in my neighborhood, I'm going through chemo, it's convenient for me, they've been very helpful for me, and I did not, I was not aware that we had so many within this radius. They do not give you information with a glossary telling you where to go. You have to look yourself. I found one, I like it. They're very friendly, personable, they've been very informative for me. This is my first experience going through this, dealing with the pain, paying hundreds of dollars for medication that does not work. I found something that works, I would like to continue with it. I would like to continue going where I'm going. I'm not aware of all these places that they speak of within 10-block radius. I attend the neighborhood watch meetings. I am aware of what's going on in my neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am. Did you submit a card, ma'am?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. If I could just recommend, if you can go to your council office, we can give you, we give you references for other locations, pending on the action of this committee.
They do not give them.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Reverend Brian T. Castaneda.
This gentleman that represents Herb Wesson, we don't see him at our meetings.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes, Terry Kaufman, Masiya City Attorney's Office. I just wanted to clarify in the ordinance, the ICO, that the hardship exemption, it's legislative, and it's, it goes to the reason why the applicant could not register with the city clerk before the ICO became effective. That is what the hardship exemption is about. And it's within the discretion, obviously, of this committee and the, and the city council. So, and also the, the materials in front of you today and the testimony, if, if you obviously have questions, the committee is, is going to ask the questions, but if they don't have any questions, you have enough information with the testimony and the written materials that have been submitted to make a determination and recommendation today.
Just for the record, and just for those who are sitting in the audience, can you repeat again the legislative responsibility we have as defined by the code?
Well, the, the hardship exemption under Section 4 of the ICO is, is legislative, and it's discretionary. And what it goes to is not, not self-induced economic hardship, but what was the reason why the applicant could not register with the city clerk before the effective date of the ordinance? That is the function of the hardship exemption.
What's the standard we use to evaluate the facts before us?
It's just, it's a reasonable standard. It's within your discretion to hear the testimony and make your determination in your legislative capacity.
And just to be very clear, I put a lot of weight on the opinion of the respective council members of each district. So, based on their evaluation, based on their assertions, based on their observations, a lot of weight is put on that discretion, on that line of reasoning, and that is a major factor for my actions. We're both here as council members, as committee members, to hear this information, that we can, we can make a decision. So, that is the basis of our actions.
And again, Mr. Chair, I want to reiterate that, you know, given the conflicts that do exist between federal, state, and even local laws, that the city has gone forward with attempting to draft an ordinance to allow the proper legitimate dispensing of medical marijuana. But in order, before we actually implement that ordinance, we implemented an interim control ordinance, meaning that we kind of said, let's hold on, let's not open any more dispensaries until we draft and implement this ordinance. In the interim control ordinance, we had a hardship exemption. The hardship exemption in no way allowed any dispensary to open up until you, we determined whether the hardship exemption would be granted or not. I know there's a lot of need for medical marijuana, but at this time, those who do need it do have access to it in the city of Los Angeles. We are trying to control how people have access. We are trying to come up with a framework by which that happens. So, at this time, all we're doing is evaluating those that have opened or those that have applied for hardship exemption under the interim control ordinance. We are not saying that we will not allow people to have access to it.
So, the information being built up is presented to us, and at the hearing is where we make a determination. So, that being said, Mr. Reverend Brian T. Castaneda. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Councilman, and I'm speaking on behalf of Agenda Item 17, but also 20, 21, and 24. So, I am, my name is, again, is Father Brian Castaneda, and I am the pastor of Holy Spirit Roman Catholic Church located at 5300 West Pico Boulevard. On behalf of our parishioners and the students and parents of Holy Spirit Elementary School, I urge you to deny the applications for establishment of medical marijuana clinics described in the council files listed above, which are scheduled, scheduled for consideration before your committee today. These proposed locations would form a cluster of medical marijuana dispensaries within blocks of our school and church. Our faith community and the parents of the students in our school have grave concerns about the potential impact of these clinics in our community. Please consider the safeguards that are required to protect the children and families of this community, and vote no on these applications. And we commit...
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you very much.
Councilman, could I turn this in for...
Please, you can submit to the record, to our clerk, please. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Again.
Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy for Councilmember Herb Wesson. This application was filed 18 months after the ICO, and the rationale given for the hardship was that the collective had committed itself to making every patient's needs, number one, that they have substantial professionalism. They also state that their collective is insured, permitted, and licensed. Based on the application, none of this documentation was provided, and so, based on that ration, that reason, and also the other reasons given in the letters put in by Councilmember Herb Wesson, we do respectfully ask that the hardship application be denied for this exemption.
Thank you, Mr. Westall. Okay. So, based on the application submitted, given the council office's District 10 recommendation, the applicant cites commitment, professionalism, experience amongst the reasons, which do not demonstrate any hardship from the provisions of Ordinance 179027, including but not limited to reasons the applicant was unable to register with the city clerk pursuant to Section 3 of the ordinance. This also cites proximity to sensitive uses, schools, preschool, and childcare. Therefore, I recommend we move to deny the hardship exemption application. You have a second? There's a second, and that'll be the action of this committee. Thank you, sir. Next item, Roberto?
That would be item 18, Councilmembers. This item contains also, again, a letter by Councilmember Wesson. It's an application filed by Andrew Crayundler, and it's a hardship exemption ICO for Helping Hand Network Inc., located at 9636 Venice Boulevard in CD10.
Okay. How do you do, sir?
Well, thank you.
See you again.
Graham Berry, especially appearing for the law offices of Stuart Richland on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, sir. You have two minutes?
I wish to incorporate my previous comments in relation to matters 1, 2, 4, and 5, and repeat my objections as to due process, substantive and procedural.
Would you mind speaking on the microphone, make sure it's getting recorded?
And repeat my objections to both substantive and procedural due process. With regard to Councilman Wesson's objections, referring to a church and a school nearby, they lack merit. There is nothing set forth in the ICO regarding proximity to schools, churches, or any other sensitive use, and that is part of the problem of the ambiguous framework which is being operated under here. Furthermore, the committee is relying upon the representations of the city councilman's office without providing equal opportunity to, for a full presentation of evidence by the applicant. The hardship extent, hardship being endured properly includes the fear of prosecution and penalty by federal law enforcement authorities. The applicants have properly relied upon a procedure set forth in the ICO. The ICO does not define hardship, and this council's representatives have set forth in Mr. Richland's declaration, have explained the procedure to be followed, and that included the filing of a hardship application, opening for business, and awaiting a hearing, a full hearing, not the pass that we have been given today. They have followed that procedure, and they are now being discriminated and prejudiced by contrary actions taken by the very same council. There is nothing special or exclusive about the original 187. The state scheme permits and does not restrict the number of outlets that may be licensed, subject to only zoning impact matters, and it is clearly that those zoning impact matters are being misused here.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Westall?
Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy with Councilmember Herb Wesson's office. This application was applied for 20 months after the ICO went into effect. Once again, this application has little to no supporting documentation for the hardship request. The only documentation provided was articles of incorporation for the business. The application states as the hardship, the conflict between federal and state law, and as stated previously, this in and of itself does not constitute a hardship, or a reason to grant a hardship. So, based on the application submitted and the letter submitted by Councilmember Wesson, the application, the applicant has not demonstrated any hardship from the provisions of the ICO, and therefore, the hardship exemption application should be denied.
Okay. Councilmember, sir? Okay. Well, given the information cited by the council office, and given the information provided by the applicant, and also the proximity to sensitive uses such as schools and preschools and churches in the area, we would move to deny the hardship exemption application.
Second.
Second? That'll be the action of this committee. Roberto, next item?
It's item 19. Again, it contains a letter from Councilmember Wesson. It's an application filed by Ken Yoshitaki, and it's for Medical Marijuana ICO for Holistic Harvest located at 9636 Venice Boulevard, which is also the same property address as number 18 in CD10.
Is the applicant here? Yes. You filled out a card, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. Please, take a seat. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Kristen White, and I'm a co-owner of Holistic Harvest, and thank you for listening to us speak. I want to talk about the hardship. Holistic Harvest could not open before the moratorium because we were uncertain about DEA raids, and there was a complete confusion over city's proposed rules. Upon... Upon going forward with our business plan, I asked and asked and asked when the moratorium would be in place. It kept getting extended. We were told that if you filed a hardship, we would be okay, and we would be, we would get a full hearing. We heard about this on Friday. We haven't had one business day to really pull anything together. There's no time to pull our community together, to pull our patients, to prepare any type of words for you guys. We also have a landlord issue. Now, after we waited and waited and waited for the ordinance, and we were told we could fire the hardship and be okay, we secured a property. The property was okay with doing what we were doing. We stated on the lease exactly our intentions, and we moved forward, got all the proper documents. Since the anchor tenant feels like we weren't of the same business, he wanted us out. We chose a medical building because we wanted a discreet location that was safe for our clients. We did not want to have a storefront. We do not want to be next to another dispensary. We do not want to be next to any other sensitive areas. And now, our landlord is claiming that we lied on our application. I just asked that you take a look at everything and put an ordinance in place so we all can do business. It's been far too long. We've waited and waited, and it's time. We've got to put the rules out there. We'll follow them. We're following them now, but we want to put an ordinance together and be in business.
Well, in response to your request, we are working hard to put an ordinance in place. We want something that is enforceable. So we are trying our best to put something together, and we're trying to do that as soon as we can. We do not want to make matters worse for people who are trying to serve others who are in medical need. That is, that's not our intention, but, but we have a proliferation that has created an impact in places that is real hardship. I mean, we have locations that are conducting themselves in such a way where we have to respond in the most succinct and comprehensive manner, and that's what we're trying to attempt to do today. So this is not really a debate, I just wanted to respond to your request.
Those of us who've been very sensitive about that and checked about the other locations and really scouted it out, I don't feel like we've had, you know, a fair shot at a hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Sir? Yeah, one minute.
My apologies, I was confused. We're also here on Item Twenty-Five, the same applicant. I repeat my previous submissions on matters.
So you're, so you're speaking for whom right now?
Just to clarify, I was confused. They're also here on another item, Two Twenty-Five.
Okay. So you are here on their behalf as well?
Yes.
So you have one minute.
Right. Graham Berry, especially appearing for the law offices of Stuart Richland. We have submitted, as we have with all the other matters represented by Mr. Richland's office, a letter dated June twenty-nine, two thousand and nine, a twenty-five page. We have submitted a twenty-five page letter dated today's date, and it's filed with this committee, which clearly is making its decision on these matters without fully reading and considering the contents of that, contents of that letter. And therefore, we ask that not only do the contents be incorporated in these proceedings, but that they be read before this decision is made.
Thank you, sir.
And that the matter be taken under submission if need be.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Westall.
Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy for Councilmember Herb Wesson's office. This application was filed seventeen months after the ICO was passed by the city council. As was noted by the CLA's office, it does have the same address as the previous application, which you just took, took action on. And in the observation of the council office, it did not seem like there were separate retail or commercial facilities at this address, that it seemed to be one retail commercial facility. The application also does not have any supporting documentation filed with it except for a Zemus report, and the reason given for granting of the hardship by the applicant is the conflict between state and federal law, which, as I stated before, does in and of itself does not constitute a hardship. So based on the application submitted and the letter submitted by Councilmember Wesson, the applicant has not demonstrated any hardship from the provisions of the ICO, and therefore, the hardship exemption application should be denied.
Councilor, you're sorry? Reviewing the case, and looking at the material submitted to us, and listening to the council office and their observations, we would move to deny the hardship exemption application.
Second.
That'll be the action of this committee. Roberto, next item.
It's Item Twenty, council members. Item Twenty contains, again, a letter by Councilmember Wesson. Application has been filed by Stuart Richland, the attorney, asking for a hardship exemption from the Medical Marijuana ICO for Pot of Gold, et cetera, a nonprofit corporation located at five five nine one West Pico Boulevard in CD Ten.
Morning, sir. You the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to speak for the two minutes, or would I provide your? It's up to you.
I would like to say a couple of things.
Okay, please, go ahead.
My name is Abraham Taj Chan, and I'm a co-owner of the Pot of Gold. About a couple of months ago, I leased a place out, and as the law says, I wasn't supposed to operate on hardship, so I didn't. I follow all the guidelines. I've been waiting for the city to tell me what else I should do. I haven't made one sale, I haven't done anything. I'm just waiting for the city to give me my hardship hearing, so I don't do anything illegal. I don't plan on operating in, in any legal form or in any way. I just want a fair hearing, and I asked all my neighbors and I asked all my clientele, you know, if there was a problem. If there was a problem, I wouldn't have got the place. Every single one of them told me it wasn't a problem. So I'm just waiting on you, on, you know, on the council to tell me, you know, what else steps that I should take. I mean, I have a two-year lease, I did everything that I was supposed to, and I just don't want to, you know, I didn't even make one single sale. I didn't even remodel the place, just in case the city tells me, oh, you can't do this, you need to do that.
Okay. Is that it, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, sir?
Graham Berry, appearing especially on behalf of the law offices of Stuart Richland, and incorporating my previous comments on matters one, two, four, five, eighteen, and nineteen, and the contents of the letter that's been filed today dated June twenty-nine, two thousand and nine, which I ask that the committee read and take this matter under submission before making its decision. The, the ICO does not limit the number of dispensaries that may be, may be licensed. And that is clearly what this committee appears to be doing. There is nothing in the law that limits the number of dispensaries, either for medical marijuana or any other medical substance. And the zoning laws are being used by the city as a cloak to achieve an object not, not permitted. The hardship faced by this applicant is real. It's not defined in the ICO. He has reasonably relied upon the procedures set forth in the ICO, and he suffers economic hardship as a result. The community suffers economic hardship, and there has been no community impact statements filed in connection with the adverse impact on the community of restricting the number of outlets that may provide medical marijuana for medical needs in accordance with the state's law.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Westall.
Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy with Councilmember Herb Wesson's office. This application was applied for nineteen months after the ICO was adopted by the city council. While there is some supporting documentation with this application, all the supporting documents appear to be applied for, received in the year two thousand and nine, and there is a copy of a lease, but it's a draft copy. The main hardship exemption given in the application is the conflict between federal and state law, and as I've stated before, this in and of itself does not constitute a hardship application. And so, based on the application submitted and the letter submitted by Councilmember Wesson, the applicant has not demonstrated any hardship from the provisions of the ICO, and therefore, we ask that the hardship exemption application be denied.
Okay. Councilman? Okay. So based on the application submitted, given the council office's recommendation, the applicant cites management skills, compassion, knowledge, and fear of federal prosecution, and given his proximity to sensitive uses, I'd like to move to deny the hardship exemption application.
Second.
For second, that'll be the action of this committee. Thank you. Next item, Roberto. Excuse me, sir, did you fill out a card? I don't see your name on one of these cards.
No.
Can you fill one out, please, for the record?
Where do I fill it out?
We have cards here. Are they in the back?
The next item, council members, is Item Twenty-One, contains a letter from Councilmember Wesson. It's a hardship exemption from the Medical Marijuana ICO. It's been filed by Blue Garner, and it's for Green Care located at five five nine one West Pico Boulevard, which is the same property address as Item Twenty. It's in CD Ten.
Okay. Is a representative or the applicant here for Mr. Blue Garner? Mr. Garner, are you here? A representative for this case? Seeing none. Mr. Westall.
Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy for Councilmember Herb Wesson's office. This application was applied for twenty months after the ICO was adopted by the city council. It also does not have any supporting documents with it except for a Zemus report. As stated by the CLA's office, this application has the same address as the previous application, and in the observation of the council office, once again, the commercial retail establishment seems to be one establishment and not separated into different stores. The main reason for the hardship exemption states the conflict between state and federal law, and as I've stated before, that conflict in and of itself does not constitute a hardship exemption. And so, based on the application submitted and the letter submitted by Councilmember Wesson, the applicant has not demonstrated any hardship from the provisions of the ICO, and therefore, we ask that the hardship exemption application be denied.
Councilor, you're sorry?
No comments.
So given the information provided by the council office and the contents of the application, we move to deny the hardship exemption application.
Second.
That'll be the action of this committee. Roberto, next item.
It's Item Twenty-Two, council members. It's a letter, contains a letter by Councilmember Wesson. It's an application filed by Ricky Hughes, seeking a hardship exemption from the Medical Marijuana ICO for Four Twenty Wellness located at two one two six South La Brea Avenue, number one oh four, in CD Ten.
Still morning, good morning. How are you doing?
Morning.
Okay.
So, hi, I come here as a native Los Angeles, Los Angelen taxpayer and voter. I have a wellness center that I've had in Glendale, and a lot of my patients have been traveling from Los Angeles to Glendale and wanted to, and wanted me to come out to Los Angeles. And I'm working with the mayor's office with the Green Life Initiative. We're the first medical center that has, and wellness center that's all green. I applied for the hardship. When I first started doing research, there was no landlord that was willing to rent, and we had to have a lease for the application process ahead of time. So by the time we had found someone that was willing to lease the space for us to incorporate the medical cannabis into our wellness center, which was already an existing wellness center, then we were past the deadline.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good morning, my name is Dr. Darryl Harris. I'm a board-certified California licensed physician who specializes in the field of medical cannabis for the past year. I've personally evaluated all over a hundred individuals for the use of medical cannabis for their medical conditions. As you may know, the California Medical Board has endorsed the use of medical cannabis in the treatment of certain medical condition. The board has even set forth rules and regulations concerning the recommendation of medical cannabis. I've known the directors of the Four Twenty Wellness Center for several years, and I find that they are honorable individuals who integrate wellness with medical cannabis. They are fully HIPAA compliant and, and have made every effort to create a care and a compassionate center in the heart of District Ten. Four Twenty Wellness has taken care of many of my patients who have conditions ranging from HIV/AIDS, breast cancer, testicular cancer, lung cancer, Asperger's Syndrome, chronic pain, multiple sclerosis, and Crohn's disease, as well as PTSD. And I find that every patient who they've cared for of mine, that all my patients have been very satisfied with what they've done. I have a medical practice in District Ten.
Please conclude.
To, to meet the growing needs in that community, and I'm, and I strongly support Four Twenty Wellness and encourage you to grant them their license. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Graham Berry, appearing especially for the law office of Stuart Richland. The councilman's office has filed an objection which also raises the objection of nearby preschools. And that is irrelevant. There is no, no restriction set forth in the ICO regarding preschools. Furthermore, the reliance on weekly crime statistics is misplaced and at best hypocritical. A separate study attached to the letter we submitted today shows that the crime statistics around the councilman's office are at least as high, if not higher, than around the subject premises. I incorporate my previous comments on the previous matters and ask that this matter be taken under submission in order to read the document we filed today dated June twenty-nine, two thousand and nine. The hardship relied upon is the clash between federal and state law, and it leads to an economic hardship as described by the applicant in connection with the expenses incurred.
Please finish.
She has, they have reasonably relied upon the procedures set forth by the city, both in statute and by its staff.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Thank you very much, folks.
Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy for Councilmember Herb Wesson. This application was filed nineteen months after the ICO was adopted by the city council. Once again, this application does not have any supporting documentation with it, and the main reason for hardship is given the conflict between state and federal law, which, as I've stated before, does not in and of itself constitute a hardship. And so, based on the application submitted and the letter submitted by Councilmember Wesson, the applicant has not demonstrated any hardship from the provisions of the ICO, and therefore, we ask that the hardship exemption application be denied.
Okay. Councilman?
No comments.
So based on the application submitted, and again, the district council recommendations, we do not see the reasons to demonstrate any hardship from the provisions of Ordinance One Seven Nine Zero Two Seven, we move to deny the hardship exemption.
Second. Second.
That'll be the action of this committee. Thank you very much. Next item.
It's Item Twenty-Three, council members. This item contains also a letter from Councilmember Wesson. It's an application filed by Ivan Silov, seeking a hardship exemption from the Medical Marijuana ICO for Blue Moon Collective located at five one five five West Washington Boulevard in CD Ten.
Good day, folks. Please.
Hello, how are you?
Hi.
My name is Karina Pasternak. I'm representing Blue Moon Collective. I'm also the co-owner of the collective. We did not receive notice, and want to put it on record of the hearing. We found out last minute from another dispensary, so we've actually had about twenty-four hours' notice, and I just wanted to put it on record. We have not had time to submit our economic hardship to the city clerk, which we would like to do, and we are requesting an extension at this time till the next hearing.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm still talking, I'm just requesting it.
Go ahead.
Our dispensary has five hundred patients in operation for two months. We did not have any schools or churches within a thousand feet of our dispensary. We have not had any neighborhood complaints or any community statements. We have support from our local police. We have brought a signed support petition from our patients, and we are greatly needed in our community. As there are no other dispensaries in this area, they do need us. We are in full compliance with the City of Los Angeles, and we believe your rejections to these hardship will further hurt the financial state of Los Angeles City. We are requesting our hardship granted, and if denied, we will appeal the decision and hold the city responsible for the economic losses. And in regards to all the dispensaries, I would like to say that the city is using very poor judgment. You are making the city, the debt, very, very high for the city, and you're making it worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Westall.
Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy for Councilmember Herb Wesson's office. This application was applied for twenty months after the ICO was adopted by the city council. While some of the documentation is provided in the application, most of the documents appear to appear to have been applied for, received during the 2009 year. The main reason for the hardship application, or the hardship exemption given is the conflict between state and federal law and as I've stated before, this in and of itself does not constitute a hardship. In the letter submitted by Councilmember Wesson, there are other sensitive uses adjacent to this facility that are listed, including a methadone clinic and a childcare facility. Based on the application submitted and the letter submitted by Councilmember Wesson, the applicant has not demonstrated any hardship from the provisions of the ICO and therefore, we ask that the hardship exemption application be denied.
Councilor, we start?
No comments.
So, given, given, I'm sorry. So, given the council office's observations and the reasoning stated in the application, which do not demonstrate any hardship from the provisions of ordinance 179027, I would move that we deny the hardship exemption.
Second.
That'll be the action of this committee. Thank you.
Just now, yeah?
Thank you. Next item, Roberto?
Item 24, council member. It's, it also contains a letter from Councilmember Wesson. It's an application filed by Jan Breitman and it's a ICO hardship request for Cana Health Caregivers located at 5208 West Pico Boulevard, number 5 in CD 10.
My name is Larry Adamski. I'm an attorney and I represent Cana Health. Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, first with respect to notice, my clients were given, like many other applicants here today, absolutely no notice and they learned about this, these proceedings from someone else on Friday afternoon, hiring me on Friday afternoon. Today is Monday morning. It's 10:40 right now. Based on that, I request a continuance. With respect to the definition of hardship, there's obviously been no, no definition set forth, but guessing at its meaning, I will address it. With respect to the moratorium, of course, by definition, a moratorium is a 100% suppression of new protected activities and as such, clearly appears to violate Prop. 215 passed by the voters. With respect to the hardship, to the meaning of which I'm guessing, if it means the question by this committee, why an applicant could not register with the city clerk prior to November 1307, the answer to that is the follows. My clients were not the owners prior to that date. Someone else was the owner. They became the owners later and therefore, they could not register. When they did become the owners, they did register by filing a, the present application. And of course, the right to operate runs with the land. It does not run with ownership. So, it appears that my client's business wasn't compliant prior to November 1307, but they could not, they couldn't prove that because they did not become the owners until later and as soon as they did become the owner, they filed the appropriate paperwork. So, based on that, first, I move for a continuance of these proceedings with request to my client so that I can adequately prepare, get the public record documents, which take 15 days at least to get from the city, and present them to this committee or alternative, alternatively, for the committee to grant their application.
Okay. Request denied. Councilman?
Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy with Councilmember Herb Wesson's office. This application was submitted 16 months after the City Council adopted the ICO. The documentation that is provided is incomplete at best with only a seller's permit and a tax registration certificate, both which were applied for and/or received at the same time that the application was filed. Furthermore, this application does not give any reason for the hardship. That section of the application was left blank and so, therefore, based on the application submitted, as well as the letter submitted by Councilmember Wesson, the applicant has not demonstrated any hardship or even given a reason for one from the provisions of the ICO and therefore, we ask that the hardship exemption application be denied.
I ask that my comments made today.
I'm sorry, sir. Please. Ms. Westall, in terms of the location of this particular address, can you describe what the areas in terms of sensitive uses?
Sure. On Pico Boulevard, just in general, we have a variety of legally established and hardship exemption application medicinal marijuana facilities. In proximity to this particular facility, we do have an elementary school located within 1,129 feet. We have a city-run youth and family center within 114 feet of this facility. We have a childcare facility within 361 feet and a methadone clinic within 1,600 feet, as well as apparent high rates of crime in the area. And so, while these aren't the main factors that we are asking for denying the hardship application, they were sensitive uses associated or in close proximity to this facility that we did take under consideration.
Thank you. So, given these observations by the council office and given the applicant did not submit any reason for a hardship request, the provisions of ordinance 179027, we would move to deny the hardship exemption application.
Second.
That'll be the action of this committee. Next item?
Did this board take into account any of the explanations are made today?
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
None.
The next item, council members, is the last item in CD 10. It contains a letter from Councilmember Wesson. It's an application filed by Ken Yoshitaki. He's, in regards to the Medical Marijuana ICO, for Holistic Harvest located at 3511 West Olympic Boulevard, number 203 in CD 10.
Graham Berry, especially appearing for the Law Office of Stuart Richland and advised by a representative for Holistic Harvest that this is the same matter that the committee considered in connection with item number 19. So, therefore, it would appear to be duplicative.
So, what are you saying?
So, we can proceed to the next item on the agenda?
Item, there's many cards, item 25. Yes. Don't worry. I'm just trying to.
Cross and scrub.
Okay. Well, there are several cards here, so let's hear from the applicant first. Are you the applicant, ma'am?
My name is Sarah Newton. I'm the manager at Holistic Harvest.
Okay. Just a minute. Are you speaking for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. And the applicant's name again is?
Ken Yoshitaki.
Ken Yoshitaki. And Ken is not here?
Yes, he is.
But he would allow you to speak for him? So, you have two minutes then?
Okay. Well, I'd just like to say that this whole meeting here is supposed to be a review of each case on an individual basis and I understand the necessity of wanting to make sure that all of our dispensaries are legitimate, but really, we're not seeing that going on here. What we're seeing is a lump of 29 different dispensaries in one meeting and we have two minutes, two minutes to determine the fate of our entire business, our entire sustainability, the way that we're surviving and supporting ourselves and our families. And in this two minutes, I sit here and I watch you all shuffling through papers, text messaging, eating your breakfast, not even paying attention to a word that we have to say, automatically assuming that you're going to deny every single application, which is completely not right. That is not justice and that is not how a court should be run here. So, honestly, it doesn't matter what I sit here and say and defend Holistic Harvest about because you're automatically going to deny anyway. This is an injustice. You have the ability to be the heroes of LA in this economic depression and instead, you're being the crooks of injustice. So, I encourage you to change your ways and help us spread some light on LA. Thank you and you will be hearing from me again.
First of all, Mr. Chair, I believe both of us have been listening intently to each and everyone, each and every speaker who's come up. Secondly, again, I want to reiterate that applying for a hardship exemption does not qualify an operation to open. There's a lot of things we all would love to do in this world. There's a lot of businesses we all would love to open up. Rules are rules. We're trying to get a handle and grapple with a very difficult set of laws from the federal, state and local government. Until those are clarified, applying for a hardship exemption does not give anyone a right to open up their operation.
You may need medical marijuana to help you sleep at night. Feel free to come to Holistic Harvest.
Thank you very much. Everyone, everyone has access to it.
Graham Berry, appearing especially on behalf of the Law Offices of Stuart Richland and incorporating my previous submissions and making a substantive and procedural due process objection partly on the basis of the applicant's own submissions. The, the committee's rejection of these applications on the basis of a clash between federal and state law lacks any rational, lacks any proper basis. It is clear that being subjected to self-incriminating statements in the form of an application, arrest, prosecution, confiscation of property, loss of voting rights, loss of travel restrictions would constitute a severe and undue hardship in respect of any of these applicants. Hardship is not defined in the statute or the ordinance and therefore, must be expansively interpreted in accordance with the dictionary. There is no rational basis for the rules that have been imposed by the council and the committee and there has been reasonable reliance on those procedures and advice given and provided by the council.
Okay. Thank you. And just for the record, it is possible to put the desk in order, to move papers around, to get ready for the next item and listen, so I want to state that for the record. And again, we are trying our best to put together the type of an ordinance that's going to allow for these facilities to exist for the sake of those who medically need this service. So, that is the intent of this committee. We're sorting out through a whole range of different cases and impacts in this city. It is very clear that some may understand it and others won't or choose not to listen, but that is the process we are engaging in and that's how we're going to move forward. Mr. Westall?
And might I?
That's it, sir. Thank you.
Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy for?
Oh, you have, yes, you're right, ma'am. My apologies. We have several cards on this item. Yes, you do. You have Su Choi?
My name is Su Choi. I'm the landlord of the address for the 3511 West Olympic Boulevard.
Yes, ma'am. Please.
And I came here to against the marijuana facility and also, not only me and all the neighbors and residents and business owners, more than 100 individual signature was submitted to the city councilman office to against marijuana. And also, this is, is really, right next door is a Buddhist temple, have several hundred members, across the street, just across the street of Wilton.
So, Mr. Choi, let me just ask you to stop for a second. So, you're here to oppose the facility?
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure that's clear for the record. Go ahead.
Okay. And also, across the street, there is Trinity Central Lutheran Church and it's a pretty large members. And also, another school for US Academy located in 987 South Gramercy Place is just across of Wilton and I don't understand how they are permitted to have a marijuana facility in that location. And also, Wilton Public School, Public School for?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Do you have Kyung Su Cho? Please come on up.
My name is Kyung Su Cho. I have a property 981 South Wilton, just next to three building of 3511 West Olympic Boulevard, that building. But as far as I know, recently, my tenant, whose name is Higun Lee, moved, Higun Lee, apartment number two, move out another place because they want to leave for child, not to cross marijuana store. So, in my opinion, the marijuana store moved out to my residence area. Also, I have around that area, 60 unit is about owner. So, means, you know, I don't want to cross marijuana store in that area. That's all what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have a few more cards.
Hi. My name's Young K Lee. I speak English not very well, but I'm trying to explain my situation. I really want to keep my family and my kids. I live in 3301 Country Club Drive. So, I talked to my home association, Country Club Home Association. They decide 100%, they don't want this, that situation, so they don't want it. So, that's why I came here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Sarah Newton?
I'm here, so thank you.
Okay. And I was spoken, heard from Mr. Berry. So, Mr. Westall?
Andrew Westall, Senior Deputy for Councilmember Herb Wesson's office. As the counsel for the applicant did point out, this is the same operator as in item 19 that was previously on the agenda. What you will notice is that both of these applications are at different addresses. One that is before you currently is in the Koreatown neighborhood. The previous one that you took action on is in the Palms neighborhood, which are roughly five miles apart from each other. So, it is important to note that these are separate applications. This particular application in question was submitted 18 months after the ICO was adopted by the City Council. As I've stated on other applications, the documentation is incomplete and/or missing. The only documentation provided was a Zemis report for the site. The main proposal for the hardship exemption is the conflict between state and federal law and as I've stated before, this in and of itself does not constitute a hardship. And so, given the application submitted, as well as the letter submitted by Councilmember Wesson and the petition submitted by the Country Club Park Neighborhood Association opposing this facility, we don't feel that the applicant has demonstrated any hardship from the provisions of the ICO and therefore, we ask that the hardship exemption application be denied.
So, given public testimony, given the council members' recommendation and the fact that the application does not demonstrate hardship from the provisions of ordinance 179027, I would move to deny the hardship.
Second.
That'll be the action of this committee. Thank you. Roberto, next item?
Yes, the next four items are all located in CD 5. Item 26 is an application filed by Stuart Richland. I believe he's the attorney representing LAOG located at 7350 Melrose Avenue and they're seeking a medical marijuana hardship exemption.
Okay. Can we hear from the applicant?
Yes. My name's Jeff Joseph and actually, I brought a written form. She asked me to read it for the record. To the Honorable City Council, I request a 30-day continuance of this matter. I object to the proceedings based on failure of due process. The City Council's actions are barred by preemption. The City Council's actions are barred by estoppel. City Council actions are barred by latches. As a result of inadequate notice at this time, I'm unable to present evidence and facts to support the hardship. I had one day notice to prepare and on top of that, I would like to say that the City Council's had two years to come out with guidelines. I've talked to code enforcement officers that work for Los Angeles going, where are these codes? Why can't we enforce code? We want code. Everybody wants code. This is income for the city that you're taking out of the city's hands, landlord's hands, lawyer's hands. It's a bad, it's a bad decision. Oakland's regulated them. San Francisco's regulated them, had two years. There's plenty of fees available for the city to pay for regulation and it's remiss of the City Council not to have guidelines. LA County's got guidelines. It doesn't make any sense.
Does that conclude your statement, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Graham Berry, especially appearing for the Law Office of Stuart Richland. On the basis of the applicant's comments, I would submit that this procedure lacks substantive and procedural due process, both in terms of the notice and the manner in which this hearing is being conducted. The hardship being applied for is on the basis of the clash between federal and state law and in two recent court decisions in the Carr case and the NORML case, there was confusion between state and federal law and that confusion led to these, this and the other applicants not applying for fear of being subjected to criminal penalty and the hardship that follows that. They have the post-filing economic hardship that they've just indicated in connection with the costs of proceeding and there is the community hardship in connection with the deprivation of the public of medical marijuana for medical needs.
Please conclude.
In accordance with the framework set forth by the state. -in accordance with the framework set forth by the state. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. We do have Andrew Lockman, I believe, and Liz Sturbins. Please come on up. Please take a seat, Mr. Westall. Good day.
Good to see you. My name is Andrew Lockman, the chair of Mid-City West Community Council. We currently have over twenty-five dispensaries in our neighborhood council. There's four in the city of Oak, in Oakland. In this particular stretch, we have six. That is why we've passed a resolution, a motion, which has been, I believe, sent to you previously, stating our concern about these hardship exemptions and generally opposing them. In this particular case, this one is also close to an elementary school, and it is somewhat close to a park as well. You know, there's, this isn't about availability, there's plenty for those who need it in the neighborhood. We're overrun with them, and this is one of an example, actually all three of these, and I'll talk to the other ones later, although I'll try not to overload too much, because you've got a lot of those. We're just generally concerned, because many of these operators are not being responsible or responsive to the neighborhood, and there is no rationale for hardship. They've known why this is here. They've had time to respond.
Thank you. Ma'am, please give us your name.
I'm Liz Sturbins. I'm also with the Mid-City West Community Council, and I'm also with the Melrose Action Neighborhood Watch, and I gave these to you earlier, the motion, and also a map that shows the area and the dispensaries that we are talking about today. And there, you can see that there are marked in green legally operating dispensaries very nearby, as well as some in West Hollywood that are also pretty close because the border's right there. I don't really have much to add to what Andrew said, except for that we definitely welcome businesses in the area, and we look forward to lawfully abiding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Maya Sattler?
Yes. Good morning, Maya Sattler. On behalf of council member Jack Weiss. First of all, I just want to state for the record that council member Weiss and our council staff supports compassionate care and safe access with regulations to these types of dispensaries. In our district, we have the most amount of hardship applications that were filed in the city, over sixty, I think sixty-five applications were filed, and in this stretch of the Melrose community, there are eleven medical marijuana dispensaries on a sixteen-block stretch, eleven in a sixteen-block stretch, and the ones before you today are the most egregious that we have heard from the community, both from the neighborhood council in this area and from the Neighborhood Watch Association, Melrose Action Association, which you've heard from their members earlier today. We've submitted and prepared a report requesting denial of this hardship application. There are sensitive uses nearby, including Fairfax High School and an elementary school in the vicinity, and this community has just faced an oversaturation of dispensaries, so we hope that you will deny the application.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am, council member.
No comments?
Okay. So based on the application submitted and the council office recommendation, I would move that we deny the hardship exemption.
Second.
That will be the action of this committee. Next item, Roberto?
Item twenty-seven, council members. This application's filed by Amy Michelle Weiss. She's a representative, seeking a medical marijuana hardship exemption, and it's for Bud's on Melrose, located at 7418 Melrose Avenue in CD5.
Thank you. The applicant, please come on up. Good day.
Hello. I would like to request a continuance because my letter was sent to the wrong address, then given back to my mailman, and then given to me on Saturday at 4:00 PM, not giving me the seventy-two hours required. I have it, I have the actual address that's misprinted on this.
Right, let me defer the council office. Would you like to grant them that extension, given the address location that we can continue it for the next meeting and give them that chance? It's up to you.
We won't be here for the next meeting, so if it's possible to continue, hear it today.
Okay.
But it's to your discretion, of course, if you'd like to continue it.
Madam Attorney?
We're fully, you know-
No, I understand, let me just ask the city attorney.
If it went to the wrong address, that you can, you have the discretion to continue it to the next meeting.
Okay, so we will do that.
Well, Mr. Chair, there is no legally, I mean legally, they receive proper notice, correct? Even if the address was wrong?
It wasn't. Brown Act requires seventy-two-hour notice posting of the agenda, so I'm assuming that was done, and it's up, it's within the discretion of this committee if they want, based on this fact, if the committee wants to continue or not.
Counselor, let me hear your thoughts on that.
Well, my thoughts on this is that, as I look at all these applications, it has the same handwriting, same reasoning verbatim, a lot of these applications, as to why they think they have a hardship exemption. If we, if they got legal proper notice, I say we could, we hear this item today, because I don't see any new information we will receive, I don't see any new reason we receive, and we continue this item.
Okay, well, being the resident committee attorney?
But if it's legally, I mean, if there is a legal problem with what they're presenting us today with the, with the wrong address, we should continue it. Otherwise, I say we move forward today.
Well, I'm hearing from the clerk that the agenda was posted seventy-two hours in advance, and I, I don't know what other notice was given, so perhaps the clerk can address that.
Please introduce yourself.
Patrice Laddam, City Clerk's Office. As a courtesy, agendas were sent out to each applicant on the agenda, as a courtesy.
Okay, for seventy-two hours, within the seventy-two hours.
I, I'll defer to the local council office, but if there's no legal issue, I say we hear this item today.
Okay. I don't hear a legal issue doing.
No, it's within your discretion.
Okay, okay, so we will move forward.
Okay.
Please give us your statement. Can you give her two minutes, please?
Yeah, I'm Amy Weiss, president of Bud's on Melrose Inc., a nonprofit collective. My grandmother and mother are both cancer survivors. My mother used medical marijuana to control the anxiety and pain caused by her cancer treatment. After many bad experiences at collectives that were dirty, outrageously priced, had people sitting around medicating on the premises, and the budtenders were so medicated that they couldn't properly help her, she wanted to open a collective that would bring compassion back to the Compassionate Act. Unfortunately, prior to when the moratorium was set, she was too ill to open the collective, and it was only until now that she was able to, to go forward with what she wanted to do. She wanted to cater to other breast cancer survivors from her group who had the same complaints. While opening Bud's on Melrose, we obtained the proper business licenses, tax certificates, liability insurance, as well as all the building permits required by the city. There isn't a school or library within a thousand feet of our collective, and our facility is handicap accessible, clean, there's no loitering outside or smoking allowed on the premises. We have a registered guard and only allow verified patients to enter. We follow all the guidelines already established for our collective. We agree that there needs to be regulations set, set regarding how collectives operate, and once the final ordinance is passed, we plan to adhere to these regulations. We have petitions signed by our patients and letters available from our neighbors to show that we do not cause a negative effect on the neighborhood, and we run our collective in a very safe and professional manner. Please allow Bud's on Melrose to continue to provide a safe haven to many patients who thank us every day for creating a safe and compassionate collective.
Thank you. Ma'am? Good day.
I'm Kathy Weiss.
Yes.
I'm CFO of Bud's on Melrose, and I have breast cancer, and the reason I opened this was because I didn't find that there was counseling or proper care at many of the other collectives, including one owned by my son who opened many years ago. So we provide counseling, and probably not after today, we provide free medication to many breast cancer patients. And this is a hardship on me, because I did spend a lot of money, the city forced us to do many things, we have liability insurance, we followed everything, we were under the impression that we could open, and it would be a hardship to the people that I provide free medication for, but now I can no longer provide free medication, because it will be noted everywhere. But I do provide counseling to other people like myself who couldn't tolerate the chemo, and you'll excuse me if I can't hear you very well either, because that affected my hearing, but anyway, so my hardship is that I give counseling to other breast cancer patients, and we do everything according to the law.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss.
When did you open?
We, well, we were supposed to open February, but because the city forced us to do so many things to the tune of seventy thousand dollars of my savings, we just opened about a month ago.
She wanted to do it prior, we did. My brother owns a pre-moratorium collective, but because she became so ill, we weren't able to file prior to the moratorium, even though we wanted to. This is the first time she's been well enough for us to actually go forward and be able to provide for other patients like herself. It was very uncomfortable for her to go into these places, and as her caretaker, I would go in with her, and it was like, wow, these people are so medicated, they can't tell her what strains are going to help her and take care of her, you know, get rid of her anxiety and pain. There are reasons why these are open, and they're to help cancer patients like my mom. They're people taking advantage of it, and if you were to come and look at our facility, it's clean, nobody smokes in there. Our people who work there, they don't medicate. They're there to help people who need this. If you shut us down, you're going to be, you're going to be taking away what our patients really need, and that's somebody to help them, not have a fun party place to smoke and have DJs and all this stuff. We don't have that. We're there to help patients. Please let us do that.
Also, we invited, we invited our landlord to see, and he was confident that we would have a facility that he wouldn't be afraid of.
And who filled out your application to, for the hardship exemption?
I did.
And this is your handwriting?
Yes.
This is your handwriting? And who gave you, when you write, when you write here, your reasonings for hardship exemption, where'd you get that from? What, what made you believe that this, these were the reasons to apply for hardship exemption?
Well, I conferred with a couple of other people who were fighting the cause, and they told me that, that, you know, if you are a patient, that you have every right to open, and they led me to believe that because she was too ill for us to go ahead and open, that it was considered a hardship.
Okay, but this here, she was too ill, I don't see it in your application.
I didn't want her to do that. I wanted to have a very quiet place and bring breast cancer patients of our own-
Yeah, we haven't advertised.
We don't allow anyone.
We don't advertise.
If we see a kid, we don't let them in.
We don't advertise anywhere, we're not, you know, we're not in this to make a lot of money. Our prices are very fair, I give people free stuff all the time if they can't afford it, if they're terminally ill.
We cater to diabetics.
We are trying to start a delivery service to deliver to hospice patients. This is about helping people who really need it, not the people who want it just to party.
Okay, what we have before us is, a hardship exists in that through no fault of our patient collective, the federal government has been utilized in selective enforcement and a pattern of terror and fear upon the medical marijuana patients, collectives, and caregivers. Despite the 1996 passage of Proposition 250, this is boilerplate language that we received from all the other applications, a number of them here, and we're hearing a very different story here. I mean-
This is what our son advised us, who has his own store, but he was pre-moratorium, he told us to do that.
Well, it's not an issue of what to do to get through a loophole, it's an issue of what are the facts, what are your circumstances, you know, and, look, I understand, you know, we, we, we all, we all want to open up a number of dispensaries. We have to. People like yourselves and others need the proper advice. We agree with that, but just because we are in a situation where we want to open a dispensary doesn't mean we should, and, and I do feel for you, I do feel for you, but in this case, if you said you got this advice from other proponents of medical dispensary, marijuana dispensaries, they're giving out bad advice.
We take your concerns very seriously.
We want to be able to, we want to follow any regulations you put out, but please allow us, until the final ordinance is passed, allow us to continue to help people like my mom.
You are in a group of people that we've denied previously, and it's the same rationale being used, and we've said that that is not proper justification for a hardship exemption, and I, I, I hope, and I, I would believe that, given the number of dispensaries that do exist, that you would be able to get the type of advice you would for your particular medical circumstance.
There aren't any that advise-
You should go.
That have counseling. We invite you to-
Okay, that, that concludes your statements. I'll move forward to the next group of speakers on this item. We have Andrew Lockman and Liz Sturbins.
We don't really have much else to add. All I can say is, in this case, I, I really do feel for the applicants. This is, it's not often you hear people who actually seem to have good reasons for going into this. Unfortunately, the only thing I would say is, for those people, whoever gave you advice, if any of them was in a professional capacity, there's malpractice courts for this sort of thing, because you shouldn't have had to go through this, and those are the people who, unfortunately, they haven't separated out the issues between those who have concern about general legalization of marijuana, which I understand the arguments, and the case here in front of us now, which is about these dispensaries. And I have friends who've gone through what you've gone through, and it's horrible, and we, we feel for you. I just, you know, hope that we can get regulations passed quickly, so that the responsible people who do responsible business can provide the needs for the patients, as they're supposed to, and we can get the irresponsible people off the street as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Ma'am?
I agree.
Okay. Ms. Sattler?
Maya Sattler, on behalf of council member Jack Weiss. We have prepared a report and submitted it to you, requesting denial of this application because of the rapid proliferation and oversaturation in our community, in this Melrose community. This is one of eleven facilities that popped up since the moratorium was in place on this sixteen-block stretch of the Melrose community, and both the neighborhood council and the Business Watch and Neighborhood Watch associations are opposed to these facilities, because there are sensitive uses in close proximity, there's a high school, as well as an elementary school. So we request that you deny the application.
Okay. Counselor?
I have no comments on this.
So based on the application submitted, District Five's recommendations and the public testimony, the applicant cites the compassion and the knowledge and fear of federal prosecution amongst other reasons, but does not demonstrate any hardship from the provisions of ordinance 179027. That being stated, would move to deny the hardship application.
Second.
That will be the action of this committee. Okay, and next item?
The next item, councilman, is item twenty-eight. It's an application by Richard Curry. It's seeking a hardship from the Medical Marijuana ICO for Encino Discount Collective, located at 15826 Ventura Boulevard, Suite 116 in CD5.
Good day, sir.
Good morning. I received this letter notice on Saturday, so I am not prepared for any of this. This is obviously under the seventy-two hour period, so I have no statement, other than I would like to ask for an extension.
Okay.
Continuous.
That would be denied.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I, I don't have the application, I need, is there a copy of this application Oh, yeah, yes, I did, I did see that. It was, I read that one, it was attached to the previous document, I have that. Thank you.
Okay, so you do have it in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll start, are your two minutes over again? Is there any statement you would like to make for those two minutes?
No.
No? Okay. That was Richard Curry, could I have Diane Rosen? Good day, ma'am.
Good, good day. I'm Diane Rosen, chair of the Planning and Land Use Committee of the Encino Neighborhood Council. Mr. Curry came before the PLU committee, and then we took it to the NC General Board on May 27th, where they voted unanimously to oppose the application. We also wrote a letter to Building and Safety and the city attorney, asking that building codes be enforced and that the business be shut down. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Sattler?
Yes, Maya Sattler, on behalf of council member Jack Weiss. As stated in the application, the reason is, was stated as not knowing about this process, and we believe that not knowing should not be a reason to grant a hardship exemption. The applicant did not provide in the application, nor today, any reasons for a hardship or for this body to grant the hardship exemption, so we are asking, in addition to the Encino Neighborhood Council, that you deny this application.
Okay, so based on the application submitted and the recommendation of the council office, we would move to deny the hardship application?
Second.
That will be the action of this committee. Our next item, Roberto?
It's our last item, councilman, it's item twenty-nine. It's an- It's our last item, councilman. It's item 29. It's an application filed by Dimitri Kusik, and he's seeking a hardship exemption from the Medical Marijuana ICO for Fairfax Organic Farm located at 800 North Fairfax Avenue, Number 100 in CD5.
Good day, sir.
Hello, councilmen. I would like to state for the record that I did not receive my letter within the 72-hour timeframe. Second, I would like to withdraw my application and leave to amend existing application to display further the hardship. Will you grant me that?
No, sir.
I would like to explain reason how I suffered the hardship. The reason the collective was forced to operate under the hardship exemption or lack of is because in order to receive an approval from the city, you basically have to incriminate yourself by putting on a piece of paper and state the exact business that you're doing. The fourth thing, I find this a violation of the procedural due process. You say that you weigh very heavily on the communities, and you spend time with them, and you talk to them, and you give us two minutes. I object to these proceedings. That's pretty much all I have to say. Just one thing before I end. On June 4th, 2009, there was an article. Committee's Chairman Ed Reyes said he had no, he had not brought up any hardship application for review because he expected them to become moot once the city passes the Medical Marijuana Ordinance. City Council has taken over a year to rewrite the ordinance without end in sight. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for listening to me.
Excuse me, Councilmember Reyes. Terry Kaufman, MCA City Attorney's Office, just for, for the record. It was my understanding from the councilman's comments that, that they didn't meet with the community members. They reviewed materials that were sent to the committee, and some of those materials were from the council offices. I believe that's what the councilman was stating when he said that he reviewed materials. Some of, some of those statements did address community concerns, but I think that's what, what you were saying.
Exactly. Each case has their own set of circumstances. Each case has their own set of responses from different stakeholders in every community throughout the city. The city of over 3 million people, the council members, the council deputies review that, and then we review the summaries and the statements made by the different stakeholders.
Including the, the, the applications themselves, and the reasons stated, and the testimony today, yes.
Exactly.
Last but twenty-six seconds to finish saying what I was saying.
Sure, go ahead.
Did it take over two minutes for you to read what the city council and what the community have to say? Did it take over two minutes?
This is not a question and answer period, sir. Make your statement.
That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Alina Landver?
She was my attorney. I could not afford to keep her for five hours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Please take a seat. We have with us Liz Durbins. And, please introduce yourselves.
Andrew Lackman, Chair of Mid-City West Community Council. This actually is probably our most egregious case because of its location. It is located, based on our measurements, 675 linear feet from Fairfax High School. It is 900 from feet from the front door of Fairfax High School. So, even if this application were to be granted under the proposed regulations put forward that we're working on, it would immediately be in violation of those regulations. I don't know why they would locate themselves so close to a high school. Clearly was not a very strong, smart business decision. But this is, you know, this is, this is the cases we talk about where you, we would clearly have a detrimental impact on the community, and it's one of the ones that we most strongly oppose for that very reason.
Ma'am?
I'm Liz Durbins. I'm with the Melrose Action Committee and the Mid-City West Community Council. One thing that's come up in a previous hearing, to my knowledge, was that one of the attorneys had asked for, that there's no evidence of impact to the community from any of these businesses. And one example that I gave to you earlier was, we've been working with the city attorney's office, we have a representative here today, actually, and our senior lead officer, Arthur Gallegos. And one example of things that are going on in the community that is of a concern to us, there is a gentleman from Apple Valley who was found in front of this establishment with radio faceplates and a speaker, and then he also had a drug-related crime, potentially with a hypodermic syringe needle on his person. So, I mean, obviously, everybody is innocent until proven guilty. This is still in the works, but these are the kinds of things that we as, as a community have concerns about.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Attorney?
Maya Zettler, on behalf of Councilmember Jack Weiss. We have prepared a report and submitted it requesting denial of this application. They have not given reasons in the application, nor today, to provide any hardship exemptions, and also, they are within the 1,000 feet of a sensitive use of Fairfax High School.
Thank you, ma'am. So, based on the applications submitted, and given the District 5's recommendation and public testimony, we would move to deny the hardship application exemption.
Second.
Second. That'll be the action of this committee. Okay, we do have public comment, and I do want to recognize a former council member for the District 10. Mr. Nate Holden? Good day, sir.
Mr. Chairman and members, I commend you for the action you've taken, based on the testimony that was presented to you today, and, and, and along with the members of the city council who represent those districts, talking about the problems that are associated with those dispensaries in that neighborhood, and how the people really feel about them. One lady I heard say she has the right to make, for a living, for a family, another lady say she's ill. Well, fine, she's ill, but look how many other people are going to be sick, and the families are going to be destroyed as a result of these drugs being put into our community. When I got elected 22 years ago, they were, they were not legal. In fact, they used to use the RAM, to RAM some of the homes and put police on 24-hour watch to make sure we could apprehend some of these people who were selling what then was illegal and what they're selling today that's legal. They are trying to get, get around loopholes, which now exist, in order to be able to sell drugs. If they got a personal problem, there's no reason why they should sell more drugs in our neighborhood. And by the way, we never asked the question, where are they getting the marijuana from? Where's the source of it? Is it coming in illegally and from where? We, we, we creating some real problem for ourselves if we don't shut them down in cases where they should be. Of course, people who are ill, well, we have a sympathy for them, and we've, we voted to allow them to have some marijuana. But I can tell you this, we have more marijuana dispensaries than we have drugstores in the seat of Los Angeles, and that's beginning of the problem that we're going to have in the future. I just want to come down and share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Thank you for your hard work and your public service throughout the years and your presence here. Much appreciated.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
A little tired today.
Thank you. Alex DeTig? Hi there.
Hi, good morning, Councilman Reyes, Councilman Wezar, City Attorney. My name is Alexandra DeTig, and I am a community advocate. I am also speaker on addiction. And I'm here because I am, first of all, personally against marijuana altogether as a remedy to get well. I'm against any drug. I have not taken a drug in over 10 years for anything. I'm here to propose that the city council call on the state to create legislation that would make marijuana a triplicate prescription, which is non-smokable, okay? Smoking causes lung cancer. We need to do a responsible dispensation of marijuana for medical use, which, by the way, there's already one in existence in tablo form called Marinol. It's been around for several years. It's synthetic THC, and I don't know why people can't take that if they, if they need it. There are over 700 strains of marijuana. I have all this information here, and you might also want to take a look at Bruce Pearlwin. I've, I've given you all this.
Okay, ma'am.
And I also have an anti-drug message for you, proposed.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for letting me speak.
Brad Barnes and Vivian Gibson. And our last speaker would be, I believe it's Conti. So, Brad Barnes, Vivian Gibson, come on up, sir. Good day.
Good afternoon, counsel. I think the majority of us agree that are here today that safe, safe access to medical marijuana should be allowed, but with the number of this, but with the number of dispensaries that are out there, they're out of control. LAPD vices units are limited, have a limited budget, and are ready understaffed. Denying all the hardships and reducing the number of dispensaries to under 200 always seems logical. So, I agree with the decisions that were made today. I have four recommendations, four very brief ones. The, if, when, when you do license the, the ones that made the deadline, I hope you take into consideration the parks, schools, and churches, and libraries, and make the distance requirements at least 500 feet. That's, that concludes my statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. And thank you for being here today. I, I would hope that as these proceedings continue with not only the hardship exemptions, but also, as we draft the ordinance, that the LAPD stay involved so that we could coordinate, and I'm sure we're doing this with the actual drafting or the ordinance. But hearing this public testimony, I think, is educational for all of us, so that we know what's out there, and we know how to set a proper permanent ordinance. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. We have Vivian Gibson, and then I believe it's DEGE Conti. Is Vivian Gibson still here? No? How about DeJaye Conti? I'm trying. There's so many cards, it's hard to remember everyone.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for your hard work. I thought it was important. DeJaye Cootie, District 4. I serve on the Hollywood Neighborhood Council's, Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council's Public Safety Committee. I've done a lot of hard work here with Cal, Los Angeles's Medical Marijuana Working Group. I'm also the volunteer campaign coordinator for Frank Scheftel for City Council, and I run the Patient Advocacy Network, a Los Angeles 501(c)(3). I thought it'd be important this morning to address some contradictory statements. One, I heard from the city attorney's office that, that the hardship exemption was for those who opened after the ICO to demonstrate why they had a hardship. In Working Group, we discussed that the hardship was for those who registered prior to the ICO and then fell victim to something that required them to file a hardship, namely, receiving the DEA landlord threat letter and being forced to move as a result of that. When we asked about that, we were told directly that those dispensaries had to file a hardship. We were never told that those dispensaries could not operate during that time, acknowledging that that would constitute a further hardship on those patients, to have given them a registered dispensary, then have to shut the dispensary down for that. So, I just want to make sure that we understand that that's very problematic. Also...
Thank you very much.
It was also stated that sensitive uses were never going to be discussed as part of the hardship process and only during the permitting process.
Thank you much. That concludes our public comments. No one else, and no other cards. Thank you. That, this is adjourned to this committee.